Hello everyone, welcome back to Lovecraft Country in the Hush Hill Occult Collection. I'm your librarian Fantastic Worlds and let's once again dive into this occult structure and the secrets that hold. Now, I've gotten a bunch of suggestions from you in the comments down below and I do appreciate it, we'll be trying a few of these, I may forget a couple because you know, so much to do, but, couple things. One, one of them pointed out that it might in fact be easier to catalog books using the desk. Now, one of the things I've been noticing is like, let's take this book here, put it in here, I need a soul fragment, but I cannot use the damaged ones, but if I go here, in one of the places that has a desk, for example, uh, this one, place the book here, then I can in fact place one of the damaged ones, which means I can avoid the whole, you know, going crazy thing, which is gonna change a few things about how I produce, how I do things. Right now, we're into evening, so what's probably gonna happen is I'm gonna catalog as much as I can while I'm here, start that one. Meanwhile, while that's going on, I'm gonna see if I can do more than once at a time. Maybe we can, maybe we can't, let's find out, let's get to her stuff. Yeah, because if I recall, the Watchman's Tower, this is Eva's desk. Now, I believe, oh wait, we need to actually get one of the books, which I have all stacked in this one here. Oh good, it will hold open like this, alright, so yeah, I stacked all of these for ease, and I cannot put Stapt in there however, can I? Wait, whoop, that could be because Stapt has, yep, Stapt has, knock, and we need one that holds knock, does this one hold knock? Let's see, this is not Julian's, Julian's the second person who's had this one, this is Solomon. Solomon does not have it either, so cannot in fact use Stapt. Now, what I could have done, I suppose, is that if we have, this one's using it because we have lantern, I could have used this lantern over here and then used the damaged Shapt, sorry, wanted to point out, I'm putting an extra syllable there, I do apologize, Shapt, as it were. And one of the things we have to consider is that we do have to actually start, keep upgrading our skills, for example, because I know I have memory sight here, right? So that gives me a total of three, probably need five to get to the next level, but maybe we need four, I mean, this is a soul fragment, which we could possibly use with, you know, Foss, once we get that around, then we can get a memory sight pretty easily, in fact, what we can do is we can, let me see if I can find this, let's grab a piece of wall art, put it here, put this in its place, and we should get a, um, we should get another memory, hopefully that will be sight as well, we can see if we can combine the two together and then get additional skill this way. Now, like I said, we really need to catch up on things, there's also a point out, I may wanna reply to this letter, now, I have already replied to the original one, but it's possible they got invalidated, which means I'll have to use up a piece of ink to do so, and I've only got a couple things of ink, one of which is a four edge, the other's a six lantern, now, probably end up using the four edge, and I've been told that I can in fact produce ink as a, that's Whispering Sand, there it is. Alright, so what we need to do is we need to put this in, message for me, read the letter to reply, link at a desk, oh, okay, just curious if it's any different than what we gotten before, but we can put here to read, which is good, alright, right, trust hopes I've arrived, trust, but I haven't yet repped, ugh, god, so I had forgotten actually, take notes whenever you prefer, huh, copied the clipboard, yeah, I'd point out that, okay, there is a way to do this, I've not figured it out yet, unfortunately, uh, it's just me not being that bright, um, let's try this again, but with the ink, so see if we can reply to it, apply, add a soul card, determine the tone of the characters, alright, so we'll do this when we get our soul fragments back, and for the meantime, we'll just put this here, really should do something with it, but yeah, let's just continue, because we don't need to keep doing that. Now, I've got a kind of an idea of how we're gonna tackle this, first of all, we need to get more of these, um, skills up so I can use them better off, we need to produce more things, for example, um, like, can't do anything, I don't have a soul card anyways, we're also low in cash, we're gonna have to concentrate in generating a little more capital than we have had before, so yeah, got kind of a system, once we hit dawn, we'll, I'll show you how I plan to work forward with this, ah, there we go, collect, alright, memory sight, so let's try this, just try the glazier, let's put in the two memories, since we know we can, oh, we only can have one memory sight, is that it? Okay, I see you, I see you, I see how this works, alright, cool, 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 but yeah, we need lantern, lantern, and soul with lantern, and where's the other one? Ah, there we go, okay, so yeah, Foss fascinated, this is an account, requires eight scale, alright, so we put the ones that we have not read here, there, and we're gonna see what happens, alright, so we've reached the next day, we need to pause for a moment, this is one of the reasons why I kind of, um, pause a lot, there's a lot of things going on, but, here's my plan, alright, so, we still need to clear a bunch of these, and these are, some of them are very easily within just purchasing somebody at the market, at the market, at the, uh, bar, because as you can see, you've got four heart, four rose, okay, so what we're gonna do, is since we only have three that are possible to use to generate income, we want us, the tryst puts out two pennies, which is only really good if we're going to try to get a penny to get, um, what the moth memory we can by throwing a penny in the water, and, otherwise it just gets, and, but otherwise, the other ones give us a sixpence, now, what we're gonna do is put the tryst in, then put in the sixpence, now, what we're gonna do is every day at the top, we're gonna see what unusual help we can get, we're also gonna see what weather card we get, see what combinations we can come up with, meanwhile, while that's going on, over here, let's see, over here, we've got, right, I'm going to try a couple of things, one, let's put in the fascination, then we can put in, let's say, this one here, that'll catalog another one, and by the way, can't contaminate this one, this is the lantern one, now, this, we can't, ah, right, but we can use the, we don't use the Stapt here, we use this one here, that will catalog a curia, period book, which is good, over here, at the other desk, which can also use, um, lantern, we'll throw in our damaged fat Foss, and then we'll throw in another book, let's say it's this one, solar period, ooh, occasionally contaminated, which doesn't matter so much with the Foss unless the Foss gets damaged, alright, just stick with the normal ones, we can't really crack a lot of these anyways, alright, so these are gonna be by color, relatively safe, hopefully, alright, so while that's going on, we have to ask ourselves what it's gonna take to do this, we've got four here, and, let's talk about getting a memory, so five will probably do it from here to here, but that's gonna consume it, which is unfortunate, but, it could possibly produce what we were looking for, let's grab this, let's grab this one, see if it's any different, wait, you can't? Hmm, alright, uh, but we need, we would need one of the memory ones, that's what we use up these, we don't wanna use up these, we'll wait till we get our norms back, right, then we'll generate, see about generating that, alright, gale, what's a gale produce? Three heart, ooh, ooh, this is good, we can get to a lot of places like this, we've got also, ooh, wait, 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 under our reading section, we've got the second one here, I believe, a six sky, can we produce six sky, we've got one here, four here, just hang on a second, so that's three, alright, but, one here, one here, that's four, five, six, so if we try to, um, huh, so let's grab that book, yes, this is six sky, we only need to generate three, and if we're doing this, let's see, soul, skill, and memory, so we have three slots, but, can we also do this as a book? This is sky, do we have a, uh, one of, does one of our, no, that's not sky, that is sky, we'll have about 0.9 seconds, boom, but check these out, alright, so first, we've got the gem and ad three, fragile manuscript illustrated with twin shapes of sad and luminous beauty, and with all phases of the moon, it might be as old as the seventh century, but the language foreseen is much older, coral decorates its cover, sharp edges, yeah, that's part of a book we've seen in the main one, and one of my favorite books, actually, but, what we will do is we'll put this over here, as the ones we have finished, now, Foss, the fascination on Foss is currently good, doesn't have a sky unfortunately, but, this would allow us to use, right, this one has this, what, oh, devoured tantra, and requires six grail, which is gonna be a relatively easy one, okay, but the, the Shapt, Shapt is there, but, what we, can we do with this, if we can get this book in place, put the memory here, that's six, this is four, and this, that, but what can go here? What can go here? We, remember that tool, the tool that has one sky in it, the astral abe, boom, I can master this, yes, we can do it, do it, do it now, the weather isn't very useful about this, so, really should go over here and check to see if we've managed to snag anyone, ah, 29 seconds remaining, I'll just keep it going for a bit, alright, so, yeah, I mean, we might have spoiled it for advancement in any way, in any fraction, but we have actually gotten to the point where hopefully I get at least a skill, possibly a scy fragment, but now, yeah, we gotta figure out what we're gonna do, now, I think what we can do, is that we can keep using, uh, let's see, keep using the fascinated, let's grab one more book, in catalog, uh, let's say let's grab that one, then we come back over to here, alright, we grab this, put that in place, grab, since we can use, we wanna use this, this one, no, use this one, no, that's key, alright, yeah, this one goes here, start that, with the cataloging, and this one goes over here, when we have it, alright, keep going, and this one right here, then we have the appropriate skill, alright, sigh, so now, hmm, huh, oh right, need to write some things, well, uh, wanna, that's, passing by a poet, alright, winter moth and sky, alright, winter moth and sky, what do we have? You can just throw him right there into the ground floor, but we need more, it's this one, the one I really want is this one, but, I don't have the appropriate person, he costs 24, I have six, which means I can't even afford the son of a bitch, oh well, but, what we can do, is let's just get, let's just sell ourselves, we need to get more money, alright, we'll do that, while we're selling ourselves, we will use the third desk here, have a busy morning, because I only get six, we can only make 18 in one day, so yeah, it's gonna kinda suck, alright, so what we can do, is we can, if we can use this one or not, but, we can put this here, put this here, add a soul card, right, still need to use that soul card unfortunately, the only one we have is here, so we gotta wait for one of the other two that we're cataloging to go through, huh, sorry, this should be kinda funny if we have to use, huh, do, 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 alright, boom, pause for a moment, figure out what we're gonna do with that one, okay, so what we should do, and, yeah, I should probably go with the fascinated part, we can use this, the Foss, this ink, the letter, oh, okay, already applied, that's like I said, doesn't matter, put this back here, no, alright, just, can't put it on top apparently, little risky, ooh, ooh, we also, also got some, uh, looks we missed here, oh, good grief, I need to really start organizing these books, but yeah, oh wait, just keep going, we're good, we're good, these are the ones we've already read up here, I do wanna check these out to see if I can use them in order to gain a memory, because we was wanna use the demo, that is how it worked, wait, what's this going on? Alright, using sky harmony thing, alright, uh, we do have the other one open, I think, alright, desk pale, hmm, can use this, what do we wanna use with it? Good question, um, don't need to make a second reply, alright, yep, the thing is, I can just, huh, okay, I can't throw it away, I was just wondering if I could do that, okay, so, head over here, grab our sixpence, again, it's only chilling, it's 12, okay, collect, and, yeah, right, alright, we can't use the other ones, because, so we don't, until we get 24, we're just, no point in trying to get a, uh, person anymore, well, it's a good thing to know, could have saved me a little effort, but again, a lot of this is gonna end up being, alright, so, let's pause a moment, because this looks like it's gonna be important, okay, there is an extensive discussion in the comparisons between Elaphty's own dreams and that as Emperor Elgaraz who is dealing with the dupe or avatar of the sun and rags, yeah, we went over this in the original game, in that, the fact that the, um, Elengard is a, Ellen, is a Roman, Eli, Alagabalus, I'm just gonna call it good old L, good old L here, was a emperor that essentially worshipped the god of winter, AKA death, I've read, El, El, good old L found his way to the white door at last, thankfully, speech can't follow the white door, and honestly, L never heard, had anything interesting to say, I tried to follow in his footsteps, but never learned enough of the white, I suppose I thank for that, but here's what I do now, okay, so what do we get, we get the astral abe back, we get the book back obviously, which has now been read, where Foss is fatigued, our glazier has been a, is, is in place, memory solus, which is a two heart one, the sky one, and we have lesson sight and sensation, which is a level one, sky and winter, now, we can try to upgrade that immediately with the memory we do have, so, if we bring lesson, use this to acquire a new skill, meanwhile, we have to ask ourselves, can we get either a heart or a, anyways, we'll just work with what we got here, um, right now, still have the damaged parts, so, we can go back and keep cataloging, meanwhile, uh, can't do that, but, let's, let's, okay, this one has, and I don't know, just like everything's going crazy here, this one has Ambrose's piece, does have this, which means, we will need a soul card, this one will do, echoes, let's see what memories I can generate, just from that one, because that might allow us to upgrade to the next lesson, I remember spamming these, by the way, when we did this before, to really upgrade one of my skills, so, we're gonna see if we can do that again, if that's unpatched out, meanwhile, do me a favor, catalog that, would you? Oh yeah, we're just not getting out of the office that much, except for the brief time we helped haul in nets for, for a sixpence, I mean, this, what can you say, public service is always a poor, in, a impoverishing experience, gotta use that memory quickly, but yeah, the thing is, hmm, ah, we need more soul fragments, I'm a soul man, oh yeah, somebody suggested I pick one of these, I'm not yet ready, I'm, thought is to actually pick the one opposite to, uh, the lantern, um, aspect, just to have a balance kinda thing going, might take longer, might be a bad idea, doesn't matter, we're just here to experiment anyways, alright, so, yeah, codex, clean skull, written in Latin, which, his library reads Latin, but none of some others can, tally price, mystery ten moon, yeah, these ones are gonna be kinda hard to get, we have to consider, alright, so the ones we've already read, that we've cataloged, but haven't read, used to go, alright, we're gonna have to make a system here, give me a moment, gotta think this out, alright, so this one's already read, as is the one I'm currently read, right here, sights and sensations, to mix the rarest colors, a merciless attachment is required, this gives us, alright, so what we wanna do, what, how can we upgrade this? We can use memory solus, which isn't quite enough, with matching power aspects, ooh, we need sky or winter, first of all, we can put skill, effort and understanding, we'll need a soul bit here, and what we need to do, oof, ask ourselves, is this one got either? I think it has winter, uh, it has, no, damn it, oh, this one would have worked, but we're gonna lose the memory, oh, it's so sad, oh, no, we're not gonna be able to use this that much, alright, so the only thing I could possibly think to do with it is, what the hell we got? Let's try experimentation in one of these, alright, does this have sky? Remember, this is a workbench, it's got sky, let's say we put memory in there, alright, now what? Need to add a soul card, per usual, that's in sensations, can put another memory in there, two memories total, yeah, devotion, what the hell is devotion? It's a soul fragment, you can put that in there, it's not gonna change anything, for apprentice lives, okay, so what we've got now is three, we need two, two skies, alright, just things to remember, we need to try at this point, doesn't have sky, do I have sky in anything? Yeah, we do in the fatigued Foss, but it's only one, that wouldn't be enough anyways, and before, yeah, we're kinda dependent on memories and weather at this point, which is unfortunate, but, like I said, these things will come and go, and I was kind of wondering, where is that, right, we need to figure out what kind of memories this produces, alright, uh, recall a memory, so yeah, we can use the red, red books to create memories, so that's a thing we can do, and meanwhile, should probably keep going at this one, so, let's grab this book, oh, for crying out loud, I can't grab it in this small, grab that, grab that, so we just have a couple of these, ready to go, anytime, pause for a moment, let's see what memory we got, solus, so we can automatically pull that up anytime we want to, so anytime we pull up the, the memory of whatever we've done with our book before, we'll get the memory fragment at least back, now, Stapt is worth one, this is worth two, one, one, two, we don't have anything else, we have another soul fragment, the only thing that would work is Foss, which gives us another one, so what we need to do is get memory solus, Foss, when it's, um, not fatigued, because we can have a second soul, we can have two memories, that's what it is, if we put this, if we put this in here, we need three more, this would give us three, this, when it was unfatigued, would give us two more, one, and this, right here, would be another soul fragment we could use, if it had a single, uh, a single, ah, unfortunate, no, I mean, this, effort, understanding, or another memory, yeah, we gotta keep, the weather's gonna start becoming a real game changer in this one, I'm sure what we need here anyways, need more moth, moth or key, yes, alright, we have key here, for example, which, ooh, put it back down, put Stapt in right here, um, that would be two, oh well, alright, two, yeah, two, we'd have to find a lot more, um, a lot more knock, yeah, this, like I said, weather's gonna be the kicker in this one, plus, do not forget that we will have, when we get to the other side, the poet will disappear, we'll be able to get another, get some more money by working ourselves, at the same time, we should probably keep cataloging, alright, so, since we're kind of nuts, we can do this, alright, soul fragment goes here, and this book goes here, alright, and meanwhile, in the, I'm not quite sure how we're doing this, this really shows how far we're gone, is that we're studying at two different books, two different books at two different places at the same time, mind you, boom, while that's going on, this one's unread, has unfortunately, more than we can possibly use with it right now, the unread ones go here, I think, yeah, this one is also unread, okay, so yeah, this, can I put the red ones up here, the ones we should be reading, right there, this is an eight nectar, okay, got it, account of the oaks, okay, we'll put that here, and here, collect, what we need to do, take Stapt, take that one, start there, now, take this, put that there, put it here, yeah, at least we're getting stuff done, ooh, we've got a mystery heart, that one might be too difficult to do, the ceaseless tantra, which we can read, but others cannot, that's gonna be interesting, at least they are, of course, like before, color coded, which is excellent, drop that one in there, places back in here, grab this one, drop it in place, we're gonna be reading all night, but, I think a lot of you are kinda familiar with that sensation, alright, so yeah, do it again, alright, this one's an eight nectar, we'll put that there, dude, you can't fit, alright, cool, dude, pause, let's pause at the beginning of the day to make plans, alright, but these two are gonna have to be moved, alright, for the moment, huh, for the moment, we're just gonna put this stuff here, alright, so, yeah, we need to really start, yeah, this has become the library over here, and, collect, put this back in, ooh, hold on, it's another day, we need to start thinking about what we're gonna be doing for a change, so, my thoughts, one, if we can, we need more money for more people to do more, release more areas, now, for example, we also need more skills, we need more soul fragments, this one, for example, we need probably three more, I can generate, the other one here, I can generate, think, what's this one, it's this one, no, that one, where is it? Oh yeah, I'm probably still being, it's probably still in use, oh, we have winter happening too, which is cool, um, right, when this one's out, we'll take a look at it, and yeah, we got a lot of things to think about, now, um, let's talk about whether I can burn the correspondence, nope, can't, uh, let's just stick it, ooh, wait, missed a book there, alright, cool, yeah, I'm getting distracted, I understand this, but again, we're trying to organize, for example, let's put this here, let's take this one, we wanna get as much as we can into one place, can't put that in there yet, alright, fine, fine, can do this, oh, so much to organization, which is ironically something I like doing, um, but, we need someplace to dump that paper, hmm, uh, putting it on top, oh, there we go, check it out for that, and put the ink there too, there we go, next, okay, so, we need to see wherever weather too, boom, snow is actually kinda what I was wondering about, alright, so, we've got the ability to increase something, now, three, yeah, this one's kind of interesting, stick it here, stick that there, element to the soul, matching the correspondence, this is the soul fragment must have, well, the only we have is Foss actually, to upgrade that, we need one of the memories, must be from a lesson, from the skill, or from another power, so, one of the things we can do, let's take, for example, if you wanted to upgrade that, let's take this book and consider it with the Shapt, that will give us one of the memories that we need, I think, to upgrade this skill, not sure why this skill is so important, but, simultaneously, because we will not be able to generate enough cash to hire anyone, we might as well not even try, we'll keep tryst for the moment, because it's only worth two pennies, we'll sacrifice our health and our brains in order to try to produce more cash, which is gonna, of course, affect what we can do today, now, let's see, while that's going on, I can't do any more cataloging until this one's empty here, okay, another event, all right, gods are gonna have a visitor, don't know what to do with a visitor, alright then, it's a forge book, so many, right, fascination goes here, matter in which the alchemist was spared, oh, god, so much, okay, let's put this over here, in our to be read pile, our to read pile, which we all knows, we all have in the real world, you know, which is massive, okay, so much to do here, and we still have all of this, now, we have the fascinated in Foss, which is a lantern, which will allow us to do a couple of things, now, let's see, always, this one, right, this workbench, we gotta really get accustomed to these workbenches, I could use hormaca to evolve my soul, which can just skills, hormic wisdom, okay, this is good to know, but, slot, memory tool, for example, say we wanted to generate a sky here, alright, say we took the Foss, let's say we put this here, that would give us four sky, for example, we put this in skill in, what does that have us do, awakened feather, sights and conditions apprentice level that creates awakened feather, for scholar, brush a light with the feather, and see the long dong essence strip from it, what does that mean? Does that mean if we throw in, well, the thing is, I could use this to make an awakened feather. Well, the thing is, I could use this to make an awakened feather, but I don't know what an awakened feather looks like at this point. Or do I try? No. What we're gonna do, since we're already committed to do, committed to reading the book, is that we're gonna try to, um. Does this like, are you unable to garden? No. But yeah, skill. Anything you learned, everything you forget. Skill with nectar. Thing is, somebody asked why don't I use rain for here? Because it requires a skill. That's the problem. Weather doesn't count. I have to have a skill that has nectar in it. Don't have any of those yet. Okay, so yeah. I've got Dewey. Yeah, we should probably just continue, since I got got to figure out how we're going to hmm, create things. We are actually behind on a couple of things. So, yeah. Got the workbench here, as it were. Put the fost in, for example. Throw skill in here. And we have one more light we can throw in. Could do is just use our looky thing over there to make us, to give us a memory of sight, use that, and we can create. Oh, let's see, what was it? You can create the Enigru. I don't know if we have the Enigru. Yeah, we're, did we, yeah, we've got some made already, so we have to use them the other skills here. Like edicts liminal. What does that do? Like, if I were trying to make an edicts liminal. Okay, that doesn't have lantern, ironically. Okay, lantern. All right, so we're so easy that soul. So you put the fost in there. Right, we figured three more. We have. Right. Put the heck? Papers? What does this produce anyways? One winter, one thing. Gotta remember that. So much, so much. Oh, gods. But yeah, we really, I mean, the thing is, should I be unwrapping more books? Probably. So we have at least haven't used it, used this particular episode to get the, to set things up essentially for the next episode, which is really what I feel like we're doing the entire time here. All right, so basically spending the winter in order to, uh, catalogue our books. Well, it makes sense, actually. We'll just have two there at one time, since we can have two possible options here. This one has a lantern. I've got this one ready to go. Yeah, solar period ones might be dangerous in that fashion. It might be, might destroy an already damaged one, which would be bad, mind you. Ah, over here. Uh, let's see. Do, 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 do. Yeah, we should just let that roll. Okay, so, yeah. All these books. At least we're cataloguing them. Just wondering who's gonna show up over here. Why there's still problems, as it were. Hmm. Two moths. I mean, what does it cost? I can't do that here, what I'm doing here. Hmm, so many things to learn in this. But yeah, it's amazing you can do, um. All right, cool. That's a, whoa, four mystery, twelve letters of consequence. This is one we should be considering. Let's, um, see what it's got. First of all, it's mystery moon. Who's this? Mr. Fraker? Collect. Ah, Oz, way too much going on. Lanthippus collector former librarian, a complicated man, but not a cruel one, interested in scale. Okay, so. What can we do with him? No, I was told I got the people in bed. But he doesn't go with that. Okay, so he's got three lantern, interested in lantern, interested in scale. Say that we talk to him about, that's something we can really do, thinking. Talk to him about this. Image in church's name, I would call this spiritual progress. Try a book with as much mystery as their interest. Okay, so if he hit this, let's see what happens. Book. All right, book that matches their interests. We want scale. We've got scale. That's eight scale, but we have one that's bigger. Where's the twelve scale one? Fourteen forge. All right, we've also got a bunch over here that really should be, uh, cataloguing. That one? Yep, let's try that one. Ooh. I can try. What's their interest? Well, they've got three. We've got this. Let's give it a whirl. Talk to him about that. That might work. Okay. Memory solstice. Got it. Solus, solstice. Some of solstice probably. But what we want to do is we want to upgrade sights and sensations. Throw in solstice. That gives us, we need the fragment here. That, and we throw in the snow. It's not enough. Four, four winter. Need more winter. Winter is here, I guess. But what can we put in there? Only a memory. It's got to be three, four. Succoth. Rrr. Three winter. What about glazier? Let's try glazier. Can put these in. That I guess is five, and we'd need ah, memories we're using must be from the lesson. We had a lesson, but we don't have a lesson. It's rrr. Don't understand. Okay, we do this. We've got that. Glazier and lightsmithing. So it's one of the ones that we have for sky here. We wanted to upgrade that. We have six sky, but it looks like we need lantern. Of course, skill, at least one of these must be from a lesson. Lesson. Oh, lesson. So I gotta figure out what I can do with that. In the meantime. Maybe might as well just use, uh, use up the fost at this point. We just need the cash. And. Did the book go? Where'd the book go? Did we lose a book? That would suck. How? I think we're not that careless. Bernal. Yeah, okay, try not to lose that book, all right? That was a little weird. Okay, but yeah, we're not even gonna have enough cash until tomorrow to hire someone. Oh, what's this? No, I can apply influence here, but what end are they not sure? Okay, excellent. You just keep doing that. I gotta figure out what I'm gonna do with this. Hey, what can we fit in here? Consider. We need a memory, which doesn't have either of these. Memory, memory. It's not a lesson, which is annoying. Hmm, we have a bunch of, well, we can try benches. Let's do a bench. Let's find a winter one. I think this is a winter one. Yep, okay, so yeah, throw that in. Or any of them, really. Hmm, or can you use this one? Can you put, yep, we can put two memories in here. Skill. What's this? Craft awakened feather or craft dareday lens. I think we'll do the early lens, then we'll do a fe- we'll do a feather. Can we switch this out? We can. Right, check, check out Tris. So dear day lens can still be done without this. Boom, let's do it. Let's do it. It's gonna consume these, but we might as well do something with it. Oh, well. Ah. Ah, bye. Days go by, we try to figure out what we can. The question is, I will get those two pennies. I have absolutely nothing to do with Trist here. All right. All right, cool. All right, we also need to, the four moon. Okay, moon should be easy enough. Got one here. Hmm, do we? We've got one here. We've also got the beverage, I think, that would help. Oh, that's, um, yeah, take the fost. All right, so we need to produce four moon. That should be easy enough, right? Okay. All right, two shillings equals one florin, which is twenty-four, which is what we need to try to get somebody tomorrow. You couldn't find anything suitable in your collection. This would not have happened to name the courier of the aisle goodbye. I decided not to help. I don't understand. I am failing. The dear day lens at least is intact. Gives us two lantern, two sky, and whatever else. Okay, so collect that. Consumed a bit, unfortunately, but yeah, that's what we're gonna have to do, unfortunately. And if we've got nothing better to do with it, we might as well just get those two damn pennies. It will add up over time if I can find nothing else to do with it. Do some fortune telling. Sigh. Memories, but we need lessons. Huh, anyways, keep it gone. Come across the next day, and then we have to decide what the, oh, first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna get over here. We're gonna transfer these remaining books over. We're gonna have one room with all of them in it. And then, let's see, let's put this here. Put that there. Okay, well, what was that? What was that? Did we do something? All right, cool. Always, that sound goes off. I don't know what's going on. It's like, okay, whatever. Anyways. Let's talk. JB goes here. You go there. You go here. Oh, come on. Can't fit in there? There you go. Ah, gods, got to move over to, stay there, stay there. Trying to move things around here, and yes, we have to start working up there. Ah, start working towards cataloguing the last ones. I have a couple of these. This one's unoccupied. Pause for a moment. Yep, two pens. Excellent. So while we're doing that. Okay, so this one. Put in the damaged, Shapd, and then go for it. Got it. Over here, same thing again with this one. Fost. Used to get these catalogued at least. Cannot believe that didn't work. With him. I mean, I gave him like, do I have to like? How do I do this? Do I have to exactly match it? I mean, first thing we have to think about here, so which one is it? This one? Let's put this one aside. Over here on the right, we need to generate four moon. How do we generate moon? Well, we've got none of the skills matched, unfortunately, which means, and I don't have enough otherwise, we get, got to figure something out. Again, we will have the option of trying to unlock at least one room. All right, cool. Six sky. Again, one of the ones that's actually more possible on resonance experiments in Ectathry from Skysmith. All right, cool. What we're gonna do is we're gonna put this in here. Actually, no, put that here. It's one of the ones that we want to work with. And yeah, another one we wanna work with, is a bunch of ones we wanna work with here. Okay, so what we do is grab that, grab this, put that in place. Then we grab this one, grab that one. All-nighter, apparently. Maybe we should get hotkey these. Can you, can you hotkey locations? Cause that would be good. So yeah, the two damaged ones are coming in handy here for being able to zip through the cataloguing. But the question's gonna be, where are we gonna put all these? And again, we have to decide, we can see who we want to try to hire, since we do have about twenty-four here. Dawn will come soon. Well, you and I, we have different concepts on that. Okay, so that one goes over here, I guess. And put that back in, grab this, throw that one in. Excellent. And do it again, except this time we're gonna have to grab one of the scary ones. See if that actually hurts us. Introduction to Histories. Only four winter. Should be able to do that one pretty quickly. All right, but what we do now is we can throw this one in. Got it. All right, solar period. Again, all-nighter. Guess we've got all night to do it. Dawn's coming relatively quickly, and yeah. Hmm. About three quarters of the way through the episode. I think we've made progress. Four. All right, cool. Trees is under places. Last one, since we haven't got any uncatalogued books, unless I do a roll search for it. But yeah, all right, that's what we need. For, okay, so first things first, take Trist, the florin, and go over to see if the person that we can gather today. Um, fisherman. So that'd be two moon and one of those, uh. Let's just see what else we can get. Seek unusual help. That'll burn off the Trist, but we don't need the penny. This is for moon again. We got a whole bone, moon's egg. We got a whole bunch of stuff we can do here. All right, so, again. Let's see what we get for weather first. But yeah, let's get, yeah, these should be the easiest ones to analyze. Hmm, this problem is here is that, yeah. All right, so let's take the ones we've read and put them back into the cabin. So in case we need lessons, we can mastery knock, readable, thing, and codex. So yeah, we can get our memories, but not lesson learned from these. Okay, so yeah, our collection goes here. Including that. This goes back over there, and this, we have that just in case. We have to really supercharge someone for, uh, doing a, doing something else. The else, but this, we have to start organizing by difficulty at this point, too. All right. And I think that's what we've got for all the books so far. I mean, I don't see anymore unwrapped books or out in the open, books out in the open. I should remember how to do this. Okay, woof. We got like a bunch of stuff. Pigment, memory, fuel. Okay. Membrance, devotion. Yeah, we can definitely do some stuff here. I'm not sure what we should be doing with it, like, for example, put in devotion. Put in a skill card. Let's say we've got this lantern thing going here. Ah, wrong type. That's what it is. All right, so this is gonna get interesting. We start matching types, for example. Let's see about this one. I know, I'm kind of going a little nuts on this, but we have two sky. This is another sky. Oh, can't put it in those, another skill. Put in the lens, for example. Any of these would work. I know, I'm just kind of experimenting. Wait, that's just tool too, doesn't it? The astrolabe. Put in the astrolabe, see what we got. If anything. Well, gotta get in there. Okay, so that's five sky, but that's not, seems to be useful here. Do we need a soul bit, don't we? If I were to do this, what do we got? Awakened feather again. I'm not sure I wanna spend it for that. Okay, so again, stuff that we're gonna consider, and frankly, this thing is so useful, I should probably keep it there. All right, so yeah, bits and pieces, bits and pieces. Ooh, storms. I love storms. Four heart, four sky. Oh, god, that's so much, that's so much. Are you sky? Gonna have to memorize these. You are sky. So if I were to put the memory here, for example, then put this one here, then put, what can we put here? That gets me the awakened feather. But here. That gets me a dareday lens. Same thing. Okay, good to know, but the awakened feather part. Now, the thing is. I think we can only put this in. Yeah. Is it worth trying to, um, yeah, let's see what awakened feather really looks like. All right. Again, we're just experimenting. And yeah, I probably should have used that for something else, but this is me we're talking about. I'm just bouncing everywhere at the moment. Do I have like anything going right now? Yeah, I think, yeah, we're looking for that. And yeah, we're out of books. Oof. I mean, there's this, which is kind of interesting, practice garden dummy. I mean, put the health in. Pause for a moment. Put the health in. Solar period, uh, fourteen. Okay, so yeah, definitely have some stuff to do here. All right, so these are. Hmm. All kind of nuts right now. I mean, I'm just looking at all the things I need to do here. All kind of nuts right now. I mean, I'm just looking at all the things I need to do here. Right, for example, there's trees under places. If I were to like take the only choirs for knock, let's say. I throw in this one, cracking the seal, that gives me one knock. But what can I put in here? Do any of these have knock? Yes, it does. So memory have knock? No. A tool, but we know a tool knock, for example, unless we do. Uh. We don't. Two is sky though. Two sky, two lantern. Oof, so much, so much. But this is for, this one's for moon, which should be kind of difficult to do. Either of these have moon? They do not. The combinations going here. Neither one of those has moon. Yeah, we're gonna do a lot of work here. Okay, this one's for, for knock, for winter. No, next time it snows, I'll probably be able to do this one pretty quickly. Um, yeah, the winter one. Well, first of all. We need the right one with winter, for example, we have to go over here. For example, this is the winter one. Place that here. Soul fragment. Yeah. We would have to, either one of these is winter though. We'll get there. We'll get there. We will get there. One piece at a time, one piece at a time. Basically, you're meeting opportunistic on the uh, on the weather, kind of probably wasted this time. With that sort of thing, but there's gonna be weather every day and we can figure out what we're gonna do within a day. Now we've done all the cataloguing, I could take a breath from doing that. And we can start working towards the four, four knock, for winter and for moon. All of those is a possibility to create that. I cannot imagine why. The affair of the sandalwood saint is beginning to be such an issue. I mean, cool, you had scale, you had this and you had that and you said that that was bad. Skill with what? Surrealist painter. All right, cool. What's the painter worth? All right, cool. What's the feather? One scale, two, that is considered a thing, a material and remains. Thing. Huh, it's a material. Keep that in mind. Need to really keep an idea of what we've got for our consumables. That's what I like to think of it. Put all of our consumables, stuff we know we can replace up there. Plus that really, let's just put the tool back. Go back to where you came from. Not meant as an insult, just, you know. Oh no. Oh no, no longer fits. I'm so sorry. Oh well. Too bad. Give me a slower for a moment. I can't come any slower than this, which is probably a comment. Okay, well, I guess, I guess, I guess we're gonna have to. Put it down somewhere. That sucks. That sucks. Oh well, the tool, it's useful. We'll figure something out. All right, so. You, what are you worth? Anyways, grail moth and rose. Okay, I think we've got a couple here. Grail moth and rose, grail, amazing. Mention not match any of those. Rose. Okay, so we've got. Grail. Okay, we've got rose. If we can increase rose by one. Can we increase rose by one? I don't think we can increase rose by one, so that's not gonna work. Um. Moths. There's that one, that's this one here. Rose by two, same problem, sky by two. We don't have that and heart, you don't have that. This one, rose four. Yep, we're gonna use her. To access the infirmary, because I'm betting there's a useful bed there. All right. Meanwhile, we're gonna have to, since we've bankrupted ourselves, we're gonna have to go sell ourselves. Get some money back up. So that's going on. Excellent. Now you. Get unlocked the infirmary. Ha, sigh. Effort. Soul fragment. Uh, the memories, the matching power aspects and one lesson, damn it. Lessons. Means I probably have to get them from the books, damn it. Because you have to be on top of this thing. Earth. Really hope I'm not losing the opportunity to increase these. How do we get lessons? But just from books and we can't get them for rereading, that means we potentially losing out, which would be awful, really. Hmm. Do, 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 do. Papers. What does that add anyways? Hang on. Yep, let's just start collecting cash as cats. Oh, well. What does that mean? Midday? Sounds, no, we opened up the infirmary. Excellent. In the 15th century, Natana Resenberg came to Brockkrok. The brothers of Saint Brandon's gathered sanctuary, but they would not permit a Jew and his family to live on the abbey grounds. Still, they built a tower for him to dwell and practice his healing arts. It changed, changed greatly during his time and a place of healing remains. Okay. Ooh, the thunder skin. Ooh, that's beautiful. It's on this wall. That's a really good wall art one for if we need it for whatever reason. What's this? Ruizai's ruin, a ruby liquor rung from flowers. Uh huh. We all know how this is gonna turn out. Oh my God, we've got so much stuff here. There's the valley of Lizzie's, the infi- okay. Cocoa. Cocoa. Serpent milk. Oof. Pale moment, twitching cloth doll, melancholy button eyes. Oh, this looks woven. Innert. Okay, device, operate once and okay, tool moth. Ah, that's scary. Buses from wood cherry. Okay. That, but the bed. Ah, use a matching soul card if you move your belongings and make your, this your bed, or place a matching visitor card to encourage you to stay a little longer. Like if I were to. Why is this my bed now? Ooh, it's got that. Remember I was saying I could cure one of them by using nectar? Ah, gods. It's another workstation. Two workstations, identical. The velvet, the glory is a question, moth always answers yes, the velvet's answer is no, and that is always her manner. Okay, so yeah, I was correct about that. We got a bunch of liquids. Also got this to check out. The sister and witch, yep. Sister and witch bring together what cannot be spart. She, she is sought beneath the moon and the water's edge. She is pearl amber coil. She cannot be touched. She cannot be separated. Uh. Gosh and hut. Well, the warmth. Oh God, more water. Oh, gotta get all of this stuff somewhere. You know what? Can you go here? Thanks. Now let's get the beverages where they're supposed to go at least. Let's get the heavy ones here and we'll put them over here. God, so much liquid. Oh, this one stays, this one goes. All right, you go here, I guess. Don't spill on the books. Ah, excellent. Sorry, this is gonna be a night in which, you know, a lot of stuff gets moved around for the most part. Oh God, even more. Witch and, witch and sister. Yep, it's the other direction, cannot rest, unites, the other one separates. Mead. Yeah, we got a lot of liquid here. But just gonna catalog it for now, not literally catalog it, but oh my God, so much stuff. So much stuff. I cannot even comprehend how we're supposed to take care of all this stuff. Look at it. Okay, I'd serve. Can you put this there? Thanks. Guess I have to move that. And we'll place. All of my stuffage. Gotta go somewhere. Why isn't there anywhere to, okay, we're just gonna start like dropping it stuff here. If I can. Like, I still have the laundry basket. I love that. Oh, good. Place this. All right, so it's next day. Now we obviously cannot hire anyone. You only have six and six and two pence. I think that's how you say it. So once again. Let's start selling ourselves so we can do it and get another one open. Meanwhile. Thinking if we drop stuff in all the same place that we're supposed to be using, for example. Be easier to track down later. Okay, so if you do that for our crafting stuff, keep it in the garden, we can keep moving the liquid here. Oh my gods, this can go up here. These can guess can go here. No, they're not bookshelves, so better off just putting the tea and such there. I know a lot of this is just moving things around. Oh, it's right on the edge. It looks safe. But oh my God, there's so much stuff I have to catalog. I, it's why I've slowed down for such, I mean, a lot, because there's so many things that need inventorying. And a lot of this game feels like I need inventory. There you go. That looks homey. All right, there we go. And. More liquids. Tea, actually, it's just, yeah, I know it's a little weird that I'm trying to get this categorized, but it's just me. It's how I do things. Is that a single serving? That's a single serving, but it looks special enough. We don't want to keep it aside. But yeah, oh my gods. All of this stuff. All of it. Oof. Huh, so again, we are trying to um, let's keep that going. We are trying to do a few things, but yeah. We need to keep experimenting with some of these storm again, which is what again? Four and four. Hmm. Ah, we can't upgrade these skills, but what can we do with this stuff? If we have one that has like, for example, sky, it would make sense to me. That you'd have this thing. Right, it's got sky. What could I do with it? Add a soul card. We can add, say trist, skill. If we got, add one with. This, what do we got? That's another awakened feather. If we do this. Dareday lens, which you already have. You can't do this because it's the wrong type and it's the wrong type. I mean, we've got, you can do basic stuff now, but the question now being. Ah, since we can't actually add this to anything, let's see what we got. We could. Stopped it, baby. Oh wait, let's get our money back. All right, excellent. We'll sell that. Working our way towards, and we even sell the trist if we have to. Which will give us our one penny, which will give us a moth thing if we need it. But yeah. Let us construct, like for example, this one right here. I can use, I can't use that actually. Let's place that there. What does this edicts liminal anyways? Guess we can use the um. One over here. Yeah, I'm kind of spinning for a bit here, but you know. It's me we're talking about. Right, so yeah, papers, for example. How do I? Do this? I need a total of. Ex liminal, that's one. That's two, cracking the seal. What's this tool? All right, we've got the tool. Don't forget over here in the infirmary. Where is it? Right there. That's one more. Izzy. It's only two, right, that's sky. What the fuck am I doing? Ha, 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 ha. But what about this one? Does that have any knock? Does not, that's sky. Okay. Let's see if we can find a sky one. That's a moon one, I think. Yep, winter. Oof, it's not a winter one unfortunately. Oh. Is there a heart one? Hmm. Is that six tantra, heart? Right, let's look at these. I don't think any in the right color. So much winter. We just have to wait for it to snow again. We'll definitely get the winter one. But that's moon. These two are four moon, I think. Yeah, we're gonna start actually organizing things. It's terrifying concept. Six, six, let's see, eight. Six. Kind of doing a sort function here. Uh, 14. Eight. That's eight and eight, yeah. This is 10, so that would go, there we go. I don't know, we'll just, we'll get it. I might do this off screen, do a little more organizing, but yeah, you're getting the idea of what I'm trying here. Gonna try. To make it so that. Put this over here for now. And I'm trying to make that so that all of the easy ones are ranked. Oh, probably should do that. Okay, so cool. You know what? Just throw the trist in too. Not gonna be an eventful day. Slowly but surely. God, I'm boring myself out here. Okay. All right, so the question now is. I can, if I wish. Eh, worms, earthquakes and abrasions. It looks like it's gonna be related to uh, that one exploring the tree. Travel through darkness, which is always kind of awesome. This one is necromancy and silence. You always like that one. This one is. Meliorge and alchemy. I know, I know I should be doing this, but it's just. Feel like, I feel like I need to master a little more of the game first before I commit. I really do. I know you guys want me to choose, and I'm just kind of. Hmm, decisive, I guess. Oh my God, order flames? They want us to buy something? Challenges, two, eight, written. Don't have any money though, unfortunately. Yeah, I really haven't come across anything that, I mean, I suppose I could try selling them, like for example, if I were to. Grab one of these. All right, so let me check something. Yeah, I thought they might try to use a trade, but yeah, it's a money, but I don't know. It's that currency that I do not have access to yet. Yeah, things are happening that I'm not right ready for. Oh, feels mildly overwhelmed. All this, not from being blocked, but from having too many things to do. And yeah, looking at the time, it's really time to probably close this one out. So this is fantastic world. Thank you for all from Lovecraft Country. Yeah, we, I realize it can be a little frustrating watching me chase my circle or chase my tail around like this, but I am starting to make progress and starting to master the game. We did get, for example, all of the books catalogued that we had access to. And one day we'll uh, figure out what we're used to be doing with them. We will start getting through some of them with the lessons and figuring out how that's gonna work. I mean, I probably shouldn't. Like for example. Probably shouldn't. If you use those lessons to combine with one of these or to get them basic, yeah, we should probably be ready. For example, this is sky. What I should do. Is if I do get a sky one going, I should have more sky to go with it. Yeah, I'm gonna figure out how to do this probably off screen, but. Hope you enjoyed this. Hope you watched my confusion in um, mastering the house, but you know, that's part of the fun. All of this infinite potential that can go forward. I will see you next time. Bye. Like, share, subscribe, per usual.
I'd like to thank my acolyte level supporters whose contributions help this channel grow and hastens the inevitable digital apocalypse and rise of the dark lords of content and data.